All right, very good. I am going to call this meeting to order. And let's see, let's have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Pulipotti?
Here.
Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here. And with that, could you give us the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, December 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, December 27th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Okay, next, we are going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. I do not know who is in chambers, so I'm just going to ask us all to say the pledge as a group. And let's Garrett, you're there, could you lead us in the pledge?
Got it. All right. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Garrett. Next up, we have the invocation. Is Elizabeth Brick present?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Very good. Would you please lead us in the invocation? And Elizabeth is here with us from United Methodist Church.
Yes, United Methodist Church of Rancho Cordova, and we are so happy to be here with you. Please join me in a spirit of prayer. God of love, we see evidence of your spirit alive among us in these sacred days. We are thrilled that vaccines are being distributed and that we are beginning to see the end of these long and difficult days. We know that there are many suffering in our community. Help us to serve all who have need in the coming weeks and days and months. And help us to remember the gifts and power of your love brought to life among us. May we be strengthened, encouraged, and empowered by your love. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. It's much appreciated. Well, this is a special night. I know I'm excited about it. I think some other people are excited about it. We have some swearing to do. So this is item number five, special ceremony.
Hey, hey, swearing in, swearing in to do, in.
Oh, I always get that confused. I'm sorry. All right, well, we're going to start off with the vice mayor. So, I think we have a video we're going to play that shows our vice mayor actually getting sworn in earlier today, is that right?
Yep. Yep, we came over about four o'clock in front of City Hall and social distanceed our swearing in earlier. So I believe there's video somewhere that Maria has.
So, so as of this moment, Donald, you're my vice mayor, is that how this works?
Yes.
And Garrett is out of the job.
Considering because of airshow conferences, I had to wait two extra weeks for mayor, I believe. So I got to, I got to jumpstart on vice mayor this time. The wife was home and no conferences this time.
All right, Garrett, we'll give you the job back, I promise.
You'll get our job back in a minute.
The office of vice mayor of the city of Rancho Cordova. I, Donald Terry.
I, Donald Terry.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
Defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well.
And that I will, well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
It's an honor to serve.
All right, very good.
Donald, I wish you'd take your job as seriously as your little one did while he was holding the book. Very good.
And that's his Bible, too. The last two, they wanted to make sure we used his Bible, so.
You better do a really good job then.
Working, hoping to, hoping to, thank you.
I'm sure you will.
All right, next up is item 5.3, which is a presentation to me, I guess. And I'm supposed to call on, oh, I'm sorry, we skipped something.
You almost missed it.
I was going to say.
That was funny. Ha, so good. So glad to have you being here. Ah, jokes.
Oh, I see, yeah.
How do we mute his phone?
There's another little item here.
Where's the mute on his phone?
Only the mayor gets to do that, Garrett.
Dang it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I completely skipped item 5.2. So I'd like to call on Stephen Gatewood to swear in Garrett Gatewood as mayor of Rancho
Boys, come up. Ready? Ready.
For the office of mayor of the city of Rancho Cordova. I, Garrett Gatewood.
I, Garrett Gatewood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take.
That I take.
This obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which.
Upon which.
I am about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Gatewood, come up. Briggs, come on.
Thank you.
Come on, Deb.
So the meeting is now yours.
Yes. Come on. Woo! All right. No, no, not black. Oh, is that one with my name on it? Oh, it does have my name on it. Stacy, we can't use the cameras from the TV feed? You guys better watch out now. All right, so ceremoniously, we would think, at this point, our outgoing mayor, but because he's not there, no one cares. So we're moving on. I'm just joking. David Sander, first off, we want to give you this amazing plaque with your gavel attached I'm just wondering. to it. But let's realize, in the worst pandemic we've seen since 1920, the only city to have If I go to the live feed, Lila will show me?
Yes, you can log into the live feed.
a virologist was the city of Rancho Cordova. Really quick. Okay. All right. So the only one that could talk intelligently and with an educated mind was David Sander. All right.
Nice job.
All right, let me do the old man, too. So our city wouldn't have been able to stay open, have such amazing things going on if we didn't have him as our mayor. Is there a script or something for him? And I believe in God, and I thought God put the right mayor in the right place because an IT manager would not know what he was doing up there. Okay. But he did. And so I asked him at the very beginning, which he was totally reluctant, I said, I need you to put on TV, and as much as YouTube you can, be out there and be talking to our citizens. So I think our city owes a debt of gratitude to the only virologist that would have stepped up at this time. And so at this point, I'd like to thank David Sander for being an amazing mayor. And at this point, we're going to take a 15-minute break and let everyone grab the snacks outside because I got them for all of you, so you've got to take some of them, and then we'll return. All right. I give it on the next, when I come back. What? So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. All right, so 7.1, we have presentations. So we're going to call Linda Budge to deliver the proclamation to Ray Trethewey. Did I nail it?
Do we have Ray?
So Linda, you have.
I see a tree.
Do you have the presentation? Trethewey here, there he is. Okay, cool.
Ray, hello. Welcome to Rancho Cordova, virtually.
Thank you.
Ray, as the founding president of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, it is my distinct pleasure to present you with a proclamation honoring your retirement. Nobody can believe you're retiring. The accolades that have come your way in the last few weeks, having the Grove named after you and Judy, those things are just absolutely wonderful and so well deserved. So congratulations. Here in Rancho Cordova, we wanted to issue this proclamation and say that whereas Ray Trethewey is only the second executive director of the Sacramento Tree Foundation during its almost 40-year existence, having served in that role since 1990, and whereas Ray has worked tirelessly to spread the commitment to a healthy urban forest that provides cleaner air and cooler temperatures, replenishes groundwater, enhances public health, and creates vibrant, livable neighborhoods. And whereas Ray helped to facilitate important research projects, including a study to evaluate the effects of the urban forest on regional air quality, which resulted in the proper tree species selections to help reduce the lowering of groundwater or ground level ozone. And whereas Ray spearheaded the Green Print Initiative, providing guidance to cities and counties of the Sacramento area council of governments' regions in developing urban forest initiatives. And whereas Ray served on the nationally represented Expert Advisory Committee of Public Health, Urban Forestry, Urban Planning and Design, and environmental professionals that provided feedback, guidance, and insight into a green prescription project that substantiated health-related justification for the need to maintain and increase the size and quantity of urban forests, street trees, and other urban vegetation. And we know that personally because I remember that after that incredible trip, that bus tour that we all took of South Mississippi, a couple of years after Hurricane Katrina, and seeing the miles of complete destruction and devastation of the urban forest, we know that you helped them recover from that devastation. And whereas Ray forged a partnership with SMUD, who established the Free Shade Tree Program, offering up to 10 free shade trees to residents and business owners throughout the Sacramento region. And whereas, under the leadership of Ray Trethewey, the Sacramento Tree Foundation developed an urban wood rescue program that honors the lives of trees as valued members of our community by keeping them out of the landfill and extending both the beauty and the carbon sequestration values, or trees, of milling and drying salvage logs into dimensional lumber for use in home businesses and artistic projects. And here again, we all saw that at the B Street Theater when we toured. It's really perfectly beautiful. Now, therefore, we have resolved that the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation for Ray Trethewey on his retirement and for his commitment to stewarding community urban forests. And our mayor, the other day, David Sander, set his hand and caused the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 21st day of December in 2020. And we want to give you an opportunity to say something, but I'm going to turn it over to Steve Herriman for a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. This is Steve Herriman, Department of Public Works, and I just want to give a little bit more story about Ray and what he has meant to me, what he's meant to the city of Rancho Cordova. And way back in 2015, we were working on our first community enhancement fund project. And there was this one project called Partnership with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. That's all it said, was just make friends and create a partnership with the Tree Foundation. And actually, initially, that project was assigned to somebody else. It was assigned to Britt Snipes, and I was really disappointed by that. And he came to me after the meeting and he said, do you want to have the Tree Foundation project? And I said, actually, I really do. So thank goodness, it landed on my plate. And we have just developed what I view as such an amazing and effective partnership with this organization. And so in the last five and a half years, we've planted over 2,500 trees in Rancho Cordova. Thanks to the work of the staff of the Tree Foundation, we have worked with schools, parks, neighborhoods, businesses, churches, we've worked on city property. And, you know, one of the things that I'm so proud of with our program is that we have such effective community engagement in terms of getting out into the community to enhance our urban forests. And that is entirely the vision that Ray Trethewey brought to the organization 38 years ago, was this was going to be an organization that was going to go out into the community and make these incredible relationships. And I just can't tell you how proud I am to have been a part of it. I got to know Ray a little bit better. Three years ago, I got a seat on the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, which was a wonderful experience. And so I have seen Ray in action, and he's an incredible leader. He is a man who has really donated, given his life and his energy to the community, to making the community a better place. And the impact that he is leaving on not only Rancho Cordova, but our entire region is incredible. It's immeasurable. And it's amazing. And I have one quick story. On March 10th of 2019, we were doing an Arbor Day planting project in Dave Roberts Park. We were planting about 40 trees. Actually, at the park and at Williamson Elementary School, we were planting about 40 trees that day. And not uncommon, Ray was there, he comes out on Saturday mornings and he gets all dirty and gets out and plants trees. And we were sort of thanking the volunteers. We probably had 35 volunteers or something that day. And I said, Ray, do you want to say a few words? And he, Ray said, I always love this, he said, well, I'm going to work really hard today because one of my bosses is here. And I remember thinking, Billy, one of your bosses is here, like, who could that possibly be? And in fact, it was me because I'm on the board. And I just love that because Ray is always one who emboldens others. He's always giving credit to other people and helping, you know, people do their best. And so I just have just really honest and truthful admiration for Ray Trethewey. And it's a gigantic shoes to fill for an incoming deputy director, but I am going to look forward to seeing you at additional plantings events because I know you're going to be there, and I look forward to seeing you out on the bike trail where I've seen you several times so far. So thank you, Ray, for everything, and it's been a pleasure. I would like to turn it over to Kalen Wright, who is also here tonight, and she is also on the Board of Directors of the Tree Foundation.
Thank you, Steve. That was incredible. I'm going to have to try and follow that now. I worked with the Sacramento Tree Foundation when I worked with the Sacramento Realtors Association for a number of years, and got to know Ray in that capacity. But similar to Steve, really got to know him when I was honored to be able to join the board in 2015. I didn't want to talk about his professional accomplishments. Councilwoman Budge covered that so beautifully with the proclamation. But, I mean, Ray's work in the Sacramento region, he really is leaving it a healthier, more sustainable, more beautiful place for all of us, and we're all going to benefit from his years of heartfelt dedication for generations. What I wanted to focus on is how Ray has struck me as a person over the years and how much he's meant to me, and I know many of you on the meeting tonight. I learned a lot about leadership just watching Ray lead the Sacramento Tree Foundation. And in that, he really knows how to feel special, feel seen. He truly listens more than I think anybody that I've ever worked with before. He sits down and attentive and always remembers small details. He always remembers and thinks to ask the latest hike I've been on, or just small personal details like that. And in working with him, it really drove home how important that genuine connection with other people is in leadership, and just what a fundamental of community leadership, making those genuine connections is. So thank you, Ray. I'm so excited for your retirement, much deserved, and I'm sure you have plenty of amazing activities planned with your family and great time outdoors and in amongst trees. Thank you.
Kalen, that's a really good point about Ray's personal commitment to making everything better. Some of us remember when we had a couple of interns from overseas. One of the young ladies was from mainland China, and the other one was from Thailand. And in their part of Thailand, she felt that they needed an organization like the Tree Foundation to replant their urban forests. And Ray took a couple of hours to sit down with her and talk all about the Tree Foundation and answer her questions, and opened all his cupboards and gave her all this printed material to take home with her on the airplane. And I know that she's been very successful in Thailand. So thank you again, Ray, and we owe you an opportunity to say something.
Thank you, Linda, Kalen, Steve, councilmembers, mayors, vice mayors, past and present of Rancho Cordova. You know, I didn't prepare anything to say because I figured you guys would say it all anyway. But just, I mean, I just can't help but, you know, be really happy that there's people like you and there's governments like you in our region that make a difference. It's, you can talk about building bridges, but you've got to have someone near the side, on the other side to build it to. It's not always easy, but you have made it easy. I mean, this is a great understatement, but Linda Budge was instrumental in starting the Tree Foundation. So when she's instrumental, and secondly, starting Rancho Cordova, we just probably have to ask her, what was her best achievement in life? One of those two, right up there. It is always a friend there. There's always a great voice, there's always a great advice. So Linda, I'm sure you have talked up the Tree Foundation the entire 40 years as much as I have. I want to thank you for that from the bottom of my heart because it's not easy. And I will, one quick story about Linda, we're out planting trees, I'm not sure if it was at the school site or not, I think it was a different site. And she gives this talk to the kids, and there must have been quite a few kids there. And she talked about moving into her house, and then five and seven years later, how the birds, all the birds started to come, and it was because of the trees. Because the tree, the canopy in the neighborhood started to grow out. And not only was it a better life and quality of life for the residents, but also for the very environment that we enjoy so much. And the birds are something we really count on. And it would so touch, so touch my heart. I'll never forget that wonderful story. And it's just who you are. You are a person that I can draw a lot of water from your well and be a better person. So thank you. The, I also just want to tip of the hat for Councilmember Sanders. I know when, his wife actually was on our Board of Directors for a couple of years, and then I believe, I don't, he was in the council at the same time. But I'll never forget, he had the Thousand Tree Campaign. It was one of our very first regional green print initiatives, partnership with local government, to plant a thousand trees during his, that particular tenure. And again, how that guy can open doors is something else to the, at the City Hall level, at the management level, but more aptly at the neighborhood level. And I know I leave a lot of people out, but I want to certainly mention Cyrus and Steve. They show up everywhere. Steve is nice looking, knowledgeable, I might show up at a tree party. Everyone I've been to, it's been just remarkable, not just them, when they bring a lot of your staff there. And I know you have a very small staff that's, I'm sure they're overworked on the weekdays, but on a Saturday, they're with the community, they're with your constituents, representing you in only the best of ways. So I just want to, Linda, third person is, and I apologize, Angel, I forget your last name, but our neighborhood's heroine down in Rancho Cordova, she's, what a remarkable story. Not a tree person per se, but when she wanted to beautify her neighborhood, she started with trees and joined our Neighborhoods program. Now, Angel is recognized countywide as a leader and a strong voice for how we're doing our best to go into the lowest-income neighborhoods first. Not only they can benefit the most, but unfortunately, they have the least amount of canopy. So I, on behalf of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, my present board members excite. It is because, solely because, of people that run for public office, people that are public servants, like we find in Rancho Cordova, that make our job possible, and certainly makes our service successful. So thank you all tonight. It's a great, great honor to receive your proclamation.
Garrett, can I say a few words?
Go ahead, Donald.
Thanks. And Linda, Steve, you're totally right. We come here to honor Ray, and Ray spends all this time thanking everyone else. I just want to tell two quick stories. First, I remember when I was a charitable giving officer.
they're with the community, they're with your country constituents, representing you in only the uh, the best of ways. So I just want to uh, Linda, one third person is uh, and I, I apologize, Angel, I forget your last name. Um, but our neighborhood's uh, heroine down in Rancho Cordova, she's, what a remarkable story. Not a tree person per se, but when she wanted to beautify her neighborhood, she started with trees and joined our, our Neighborhoods program. Now Angel is recognized uh, countywide as a, as a, as a leader and a strong voice for, for how we're doing our best to go into the lowest income neighborhoods first. Not only they, they can benefit the most, but unfortunately they have the least amount of um, of uh, canopy. So I just, on behalf of the Sacramento Tree Foundation, my present Board members excite. It is because, solely because of people that run for public office, people that are public servants, like we find in Rancho Cordova, that make our job possible and certainly makes our, makes our service successful. So, thank you all tonight. It's a great, great honor to receive your, your proclamation.
Garrett, can I say a few words?
Go ahead, Donald.
Thanks. And Linda, Steve, you're totally right. We come here to honor Ray and Ray spends all this time thanking everyone else. Um, I just want to tell two quick stories. First, um, I remember when I was a charitable giving officer and I had gotten to know Ray through his city council staff and some other people, and I'll tell the difference about that in a sec. But I remember coming in and he came and met with me in my office at the Wolf's Harder Center on the twenty-first floor. And he talked about this tree canopy, urban forest canopy and, and kept explaining that theory and kind of some of the, the nuances as to why we have trees, why we have so many trees in Sacramento. And it's because uh, it was a, it was a um, a health ordinance to, to prevent cholera. So they planted lots of trees to soak up the water after flooding and, and a lot of other things. And, and I remember going back and sitting down in my office and for the first time looking out my window and realizing, I don't see any houses because of all of the trees. And I had been in that office for probably four years and had never paid attention to the fact that I'm five hundred feet in the air and I don't see houses or rooftops because of all of the trees. And Ray Tretaway had just explained this to me and I had never noticed it, that looking out my window, the amazing tree canopy that we have in Sacramento. Um, and, and Ray, I had known you in, in other forms, but you had come to talk about the Tree Foundation and brought grants from my company. I remember just sitting back down, just going, that was just amazing. And I had been in that same office for years. Um, so yeah, I mean, your passion and your, your knowledge and your way of explaining how the history and the importance of everything that you've been doing, uh, is just so amazing. And then the other thing, you know, I had the honor to, to serve as an intern for Sam Farr, a Congressman in Santa Cruz when I was in college. And I got the opportunity. And I got the, and I got the opportunity to, to give him a proclamation similar to this when he retired. Um, and what I wanted to remind him, and I want to remind you because you were my city council member at one point, before I moved to Rosemont and ultimately ended up in Rancho Cordova. Um, but most of your staff are the reason that I, the staff that you had at the city council are, are the reason I ended up running for school board. And they were the ones that, you know, some of my first community experiences in Sacramento were volunteering at the Celebrating the Townless Festival, um, and helping park cars and all kinds of other stuff um, with things that you were doing in your community. Um, and then ultimately, oh, are we getting some feedback there?
Stay on, keep rocking.
You can put on mute. So, Ray, the, the thing I want to remind you, and I reminded the congressman of this when he retired, is beyond the fact that yes, our tree canopy and the beauty of our city, a lot of, and our region uh, could be, you know, it is a direct result of, of the work that you've been doing for a lifetime. But beyond that, you know, what you've done, I believe there's even some city staffers that used to work at the Tree Foundation, um, that, that the careers that you've been able to help launch, and I would include my own as one that you helped launch. Um, and I probably wouldn't be sitting here if you hadn't been doing what you were doing fif- twelve years ago or thirteen, fourteen years ago. So, thank you, not just for the tree work, but everything else that you've done, not just to grow trees, to grow careers and lives in this region. Thank you.
Very good.
All right, let's move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council of any matter. Say what?
Thank you, Ray.
Oh, thank you, Ray. Citizens addressing, uh, wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time, completing and submitting a speaker card to the city. If you're joining us tonight by Zoom, you may of course raise your hand using the feature at the bottom of Zoom at the screen. Please make sure to enable the audio once we access or we can't hear you and we have to mime. It's annoying. Ben, uh, Ben given to the clerk to speak. If you join us by telephone, press nine to raise your hand, a public comment. Please wait to be called upon by a city clerk. Hello? Okay. Uh, for items on the agenda, speaker will be called on at this point. On the agenda, when the item will be heard, speakers are encouraged to keep their, to three minutes or less, uh, state their name and the community residence they live in. Under the provision of California Government Code, the city is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate actions on any of the not on the agenda unless this is demonstrated to be emergency nature or the need to take immediate action as rose after posting of the agenda. So, Stacy?
We have two public comments as of right now, uh, in addition to one that we have received by email. So we'll start with those that are in the council chambers. Andrenic, if you'll come forward, you'll have three minutes to address the city council. Following Andrenic will be Helen Wayland Basha.
Good evening, uh, city council. Um, I'd like to congratulate uh, Mayor Gatewood.
Thank you.
Um, on your gavel. Um, I'd like to congratulate Vice Mayor Terry and uh, Councilman Sander and the newly appointed Councilwoman, uh, Pulipati. Congratulations on your success. Um, my name is Andronik Poladion and on October twenty-sixth, I sent a letter addressed to the city council asking you to pass a resolution in recognizing the independence of the Republic of Artsakh. I hope you have had a chance to read the letter. At the November sixteenth regular council meeting, I publicly commented on this matter and requested this subject be added to the agenda of a future council meeting. I also sent out numerous emails, uh, starting on November twenty-sixth and some in December as well as follow-ups, uh, some December second, eighth, tenth, fourteenth and fifteenth, uh, requesting the subject of the recognition of Artsakh's independence via a resolution uh, to be entered as an agenda item for today's council meeting. I also cordially invited you to meet your Armenian-American constituents of Rancho Cordova, which uh, the event was held on December nineteenth, um, at Hagan Community Park. Um, and unfortunately, I understand it's a busy time of year, I didn't receive a response. But um, I'm, I'm very happy, happy and I would like to thank uh, Councilman Sander, who was Mayor Sander at the time, uh, who attended. Uh, so I really appreciate your presence, uh, uh, Councilman Sander. Um, I would like to reiterate the importance of recognizing the independence of the Republic of Artsakh. A large amount of territory is now occupied by Azerbaijan. After a brutal war that started September twenty-seventh and ended November tenth, many of the citizens have lost their homes, their livelihoods. And many of your constituents have also been directly affected because they have relatives back home who have either directly been involved in the fighting or they've been, uh, you know, been sent away from their homes because the territory's been taken over. Um, the recognition of Artsakh's independence will help guarantee the safety and the existence of the Armenian people living there. Armenians of this city hold Artsakh near and dear to their hearts. The benefit to Rancho Cordova and recognizing Artsakh citizens will solidify the, the relationship between the city and the Army, and your constituents. Uh, your constituents called, called this city, you know, their home and they've actually also benefited to the success of the city. A lot of them have uh, been immigrants from that area. Um, the, the Artsakyan people are continuing to prove themselves uh, in pursuing their right to life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. They have the right to self-determination, they have the right to freedom and to decide their own future. Your constituents urge you to recognize Artsakh's independence. There are many examples of other local governments who have done so. And I can assure you, you will be on the right side of history. Uh, I'm, I'm almost done, I'm sorry. I respectfully request for this topic to be attend, uh, to be entered as an agenda item on your next regular council meeting on January fourth. I um, also have copies of the letters that I've sent out and emails. I can drop them off to you, Stacy, and you can provide them to the council members if it's easier. And uh, I welcome the opportunity to further work with you. Please reach out to me. Your Armenian-American constituents will be very happy and they support this uh, cause, they support this topic. Thank you very much for your time. I apologize for going a little bit over. God bless you and congratulations once again. Thank you very much.
Next is Helen Wayland Basha.
I have two things, um, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. Um, I want to congratulate Rancho Cordova on their Christmas light display. The neighborhood children, I saw them and they were running around with those flare things. And I asked, where'd you get them from? He said, oh, we went to the light show. And I said, what, did you enjoy it? He said, oh yeah, it was really great. So you guys did a great job on that. The other thing I'd like to say is it is um, very nice to hear that the council um, took the time to give um, recognition to Ray and all his endeavors with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. It's really refreshing to find out how much he contributed to the canopies and how much each one of the members of the council that voiced an opinion talked about how important trees are to them. Um, with this, I'm hoping that the council continues to support any endeavor to, to save the large canopy, the large trees which produce a large canopy, which eat up a lot of the um, carbon in, um, the carbon that is generated and that they don't replace old trees with young trees that take about thirty years to show the success that the old trees have shown for decades and in some cases centuries. Thank you for your time.
That's all the public comment that we have for a regular public comment. The additional public comment that we received um, is for a later item on the agenda.
Excellent. All right, so we'll go for number nine, council reports. And we'll start it off with Siri.
Well, um, happy Monday. I gotta say that um, I don't have a lot to report, um, but I would like to congratulate the community council on the wonderful lights that they put up. Um, I rode there with my kids uh, on Friday and they had a blast. And I posted it on social media and a lot of people wanted to know where that was. Uh, and the lines were really long, so good job there. That's all I had.
All right, excellent.
And um, okay, um, maybe I'll bring this up at the end, just remind me, I want to bring up something at the end of the meeting.
Got it, putting it on the list. All right, David, go ahead.
I don't see David in Zoom anymore, so he.
All right, not a problem.
Dropped.
Let's go with Linda.
Thank you, Garrett. Um, so the only, the only um, meeting that I have attended in the last two weeks has been regional transit and it was kind of routine. Um, um, we said goodbye to Steve Hansen and uh, did an intent motion to elect a new chair. And at our next meeting, there will be at least one new member from the city of Sacramento. Um, but I do want to point out a couple of things. Um, first of all, um, one of our, another one of our decrepit old buildings on Folsom Boulevard is about to be remodeled. The old grocery store that was Joann's Fabrics for a while and, and has been uh, a different furniture, every furniture store every six months for the last six years. Um, it's actually being remodeled for freight, which turns out to be very popular among a lot of people. And um, I guess they have a store in Citrus Heights already and we're going to get one here in Rancho Cordova. They, um, staff tells me they have tenant improvement plans through the building department. And the other thing that's being reopened, um, on the other side of Prospect Park, we've had that wonderful cafe called Specialties, which closed about six months ago. And according to um, according to staff, it, all of the specialties in, in California are being reopened as something called Ella May, which is, no, that's not right. Ella Mia, which is partly coffee and partly a ghost, a ghost kitchen. So we'll, I'll get to find out what a ghost kitchen is. And um, and then finally, um, the Great, the Great Plates Program, which has been so successful in serving a hundred and fifty seniors, they've served seventy-five thousand meals so far this, um, um, since they've been doing this. They've kept um, millions of dollars here in the community and preserved a lot of jobs, a lot of restaurant jobs. There are fourteen restaurants that are participating and soon to be twenty. But I bring it up because I heard a really sweet story about it over the weekend. Somebody was telling me that their neighbor is one of the, the seniors that is served by. Wife had passed away and um, um, he was not much of a cook, so he has enjoyed not only being fed, but there was um, a couple, there were a couple of days when they weren't sure that the man was very well. And one of the workers from one of the restaurants simply went by on her off time to check on him and make sure that he was okay. And that's, you know, that's kind of like the same um, benefit that we get from Meals on Wheels. It's, it's their contact with somebody from the outside world every day. And Great Plates is taking that, um, taking that um, that function and really doing a wonderful job of it. And so, we owe, um, uh, we owe a lot of thanks, especially now in the wintertime, to Great Plates. So that's my report.
Excellent. All right, Donald, you're up.
Um, there was the two by twos, my family and I also attended the lights on Sunday for the community council. Great job. Um, Shelly and the rest of your folks, you know, finding at least some way to have some kind of fun in this twenty-twenty quagmire we've all been in. Um, but you know, kudos to everybody for pulling that off. It was a, it was a great event. It kind of reminds me of uh, the days when you would drive through Cal Expo and, in your car and they had it all decked out. Um, but it was really fun and, you know, had the, had that radio station up and playing so you could tune in to, um, to listen to it too. But great job, everybody. Um, I don't think there's a lot to report, the Air District hasn't met recently. There was, I'll, I'll just kind of throw it out there because it happened and if you watch the video, you can make your own judgments about it. But um, the uh, the Lower American River Conservancy had a meeting two weeks ago, two weeks ago, last, ten days ago. Um, and it was a virtual tour of the river with highlighting different things that were going on in different parts of the river, projects and other things like that. The only thing I was a little perturbed about was really the, the one thing that they highlighted for us was the Cassis property and then they let somebody come in and kind of pitch the whole Conservancy Board, um, their tape on that project. Um, yet none of the other presentations were political in any way, anywhere else on the American River. So, that was a bit disappointing. But um, in general, it did highlight a lot of the great things that um, our, our region and different municipalities and nonprofits and other folks are doing to, to improve and maintain and, and um, uh, overall beautify the parkway. So uh, there's, you know, hopefully some decent funding this year, maybe we can get a project or two. I know David and I have talked it. The last time they went out for an RFP, I believe they didn't have any respondents. Uh, I think mainly that was also because the same set of uh, projects that had been proposed the last few rounds hadn't been funded and everyone kind of knew those are getting funded first. And I just don't think that it inspired a lot of other folks to try to uh, submit. So hopefully later on this year, we'll have some more shovel-ready things to do. Um, as some of you know, and I'm, I'm not sure if the project, I think it actually has started, is the Sorbonne Farms parking lot and redesign over there. A big chunk of that, of that funding, well, not a big chunk, a big chunk of the American River Conservancy's funding went to that um, in the first round and in the second round. Um, so, but that's, that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to blubber for a little bit so you guys can go to sleep. Uh, I want to, does David, are you back? Nope.
I am.
Oh, never mind.
Can you hear me?
All right, go ahead. I'll let you go.
All right, I do not have much to report and the report I did have, my colleagues have given already. I think the community council uh, event was pretty awesome, uh, particularly in a year like this when there's so few options to celebrate a normal Christmas. To have that available, I think was great. Another community council-related event that was a great success was the Symphony de Oro Concert on Saturday. I don't know how many of you watched that live, uh, or live stream, I should say, on YouTube. But that was a pretty fun event and I'll note that it drew more viewership. In other words, our symphony drew more viewership than the Sacramento Philharmonic did for theirs. That is a notable accomplishment and it speaks volumes to the quality of the music that we are producing in Rancho Cordova through our commitment to the arts. Um, and its success, you know, in a challenging time like this. So, kudos to them, uh, the symphony and to the community council for their support and nurturing of the symphony. That really speaks well for uh, for Rancho Cordova in the region and in the artistic community in Sacramento. I had a, uh, my first meeting as Chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Services Committee of the National League of Cities. It was just sort of a get-to-know-you session and um, I don't think we did any business that I will report here. I did circulate to uh, everyone on the council and senior staff. Cal Cities, it's not, we shouldn't refer to it as the League anymore, Cal Cities is the marketing brand. So Cal Cities announced their priorities for the coming year, they're quite lengthy. I'm not gonna get into detail here, I just wanted to uh let everybody know they're available on their website, but I also emailed them directly to each of you. So I think with that, that is my report.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna blubber a little bit and talk about things. So first off, um being the first African American, uh Black Mayor of Rancho Cordova is a is a big accomplishment for me and my family, we've been trying to really uh do something amazing in our city. Uh I want to thank the Rancho Cordova citizens for electing me two years ago and I want to praise God for the opportunity to help my city. I also want to thank my councilmembers, included David Sander, Linda Budge, Donald Terry and Robert McGarvey, who gave devoted years and faithful service to the Rancho Cordova community. Each one has had expertise to help me grow in this position and got me ready to be actually the mayor. David shared his passion for safe neighborhoods in Rancho Cordova and I know about the policies to continue to keep our neighborhood safe. Linda showed me why I should care about city planning and the future of how to keep the city going in the right direction. Donna Carey, who is literally one of my best friends, has educated me on the workings of school districts and how to improve the educational experience. And if you guys don't know this, he is one of the sole creators of the Palmer's Program and that program helps take students from the Rancho Cordova and give them free colleges. So really, that is a big thank you to Donald. Robert McGarvey shared his vision of veterans and to his fruition, I got to come in at the end and really claim a little bit of fame, but Mather Veteran Village was a vision of him and the other three council members. Also, we would like to uh welcome the three other council members, David Sander, Donald Terry and Siri Pulpati, who will be serving with me and Linda Budge in the year twenty twenty one. My year and motto as the new mayor will be dream, let's dream big together. We recover from COVID nineteen illness, economic loss, community problems, including homelessness, and I promise to listen to each citizen's and their concerns. I want to thank my wife Cheryl, the son Garrett and Jacob for the love and support and their understanding when dad's gone all the time, all the time and miss a lot of family time. I want to thank my father Stephen Gatewood, who you saw, and then my mother, who was here, and also for all her correcting of my horrible spelling, which is her fault. Uh let's, so let's dream big together, Rancho Cordova. Through the holiday lights and the Christmas tree lighting in Cap Village, July that heralds our Fourth of July Parade and the citizens, Cordova High Bands playing patriotic music and songs, marching groups and floats through the red, white and blue, and dignitaries wave to crowds. Another event that the airshow, which planes from all over the United States and Mather uh land on Mather Air Force Base and vintage aircrafts display dramatic aeronautic tricks in the sky. We live in a caring community, which through this has been able to strengthen our resolve to survive. Let's dream big together. The road ahead will not be easy. With a downturn in the economy because of COVID restrictions, we are in business, the community must come together to support each other and find creative ways to stay open and grow. As your mayor, I will do everything in my power to facilitate a pro-business government, including streamlining, licensing and regulation, and we will overcome this obstacle together as we seek new opportunities. An amazing opportunity just fell into our city's lap. I will be here, your voice to protest legislation that doesn't benefit our city or our citizens. We are here to usher in the dream big mandate. As your mayor, I am open to all ideas and suggestions and we'll have regular officers Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at City Hall, so if you want to come, I'll be here probably between eight and five. Rancho Cordova is an all-American city, Rancho Cordova is ready for a better year in twenty twenty one and I will do everything in my power to meet your needs. Thank you for your time. And at that, I would like to call on my city manager for the city manager's report.
Well, thank you, Garrett. Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gatewood. I just wanted to uh say a couple of words before, as we get ready to say goodbye to a relatively difficult year in twenty twenty, I just wanted to thank uh the city council for their support and especially, I wanted to say a few uh words about our outgoing mayor, David Sander, who uh has provided incredible leadership at a very difficult time, not only at the at the local level, we've seen a great deal of leadership and support from him, but he's also been a presence at the regional level and now serving on the board of the National League of Cities. It's definitely another high-profile presence for for the city of Rancho Cordova. So I wanted to make sure that I take this opportunity to thank him for uh this, the wonderful work that he's done during this very difficult year. Also wanted to remind the council that um
Thank you, Cyrus, that's very kind.
Appreciate that, Ms. Mayor. And then uh the one one final word I wanted to say is that the city hall uh will be closed this this week in honor of the holidays and Christmas uh Christmas this week and we will be back open on following Monday on December twenty eighth. So wish you all wonderful holidays and and thank you for everybody's uh kind support to staff and to and to our residents. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna do consent calendar. Consent calendar items of matter deemed routine and non-contributional by staff, unless a member of the council wishes to pull any item individual, all items will be considered by one motion. Are there any are there any items the council wishes to pull?
Hearing none, I will move approval of items eleven point one through eleven point five.
Second.
Second.
All right, sorry. I have to write this in, slow down. Okay, so announce Linda, motion by Linda, second by Donald and Clerk, can you uh roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Sander.
Did you drop?
Councilmember Pulpati.
Yes.
Councilmember, uh let's see, Gatewood. Sorry.
Wow, Councilmember Gatewood. Yeah, you're not gonna let this one go. That that hurt. That was like my first call in
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh Vice Mayor, uh Terry.
Hi.
She was gonna say my name again.
Mayor Gatewood.
See, that's why you need separate swear-in ceremonies.
See, see what happened?
Everyone's title has just changed. Okay, Mayor Gatewood.
How long does it start taking, does it take you to start writing the new year on your chest? Okay, it's been minutes.
I don't even know what to do with him. See, how do we cut him? Aye.
Thank you.
There we go. All right. Consent public hearing items, roll call. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-routine unless a member wishes to pull it from council, individuals, all items will be approved with one motion and this is awesome because that means they are closer to being ready to go at the SF Market. Is that what this means? Oh, wow, that's that is amazing. Okay. So I'll start. Open the public hearing items, ask the clerk if there are any speakers.
I do not have any speakers on this item.
Closing the public hearing.
Move the item.
Please just second it. This is that not only does it look really good on the outside, but it is really creative on the inside. This is cool.
Yeah, I I'm really excited about this. Did you see the fish tanks? Linda?
Yes.
They're gonna have turtles and stuff and it's dope. All right, um let's go ahead. Do I have a motion?
We did.
You have a motion and a second.
Okay, good. All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Pulpati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, there's no public hearing items, so we're just gonna go straight into regular calendar items. All right, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute uh contract number twenty one ninety-seven, LPA, in the amount not to exceed six hundred forty thousand, designed for the Little League renovation project. Oh, yeah, I remember this one, this is great. Um, okay, staff report.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we're on it, done, done and done. Go ahead and do your presentation, though, I want to see it.
Good evening, Mayor Gatewood and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department have a very brief presentation for you on the Rancho Cordova Little League renovation project. There we go, thank you. This evening I'll be presenting previous approvals, existing conditions and background on the project and will also request for city council's consideration of approval of a contract with LPA Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for design. Previous approvals include on January twenty first, staff presented a conceptual plan to city council, this was along with the Community Enhancement Fund presentation, and then on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, city council approved Resolution sixty-four dash twenty twenty, which approved a number of allocations of Community Enhancement Fund, including one million dollars for design outreach, consulting and renovation of one field. The Little League is located at Alstrom Park, which is near the intersection of Zinfandel Drive and Cordova Lane. The Little League was established in Rancho Cordova in nineteen fifty-six and moved to this location in the sixties. The fields are split between two properties, on the west, the left side of this picture, that is on Cordova Recreation and Park District property and on the east side, it's within Folsom Cordova Unified School District property. The infrastructure is worn and very much in need of renovation and there's limited parking. The fields consist of two two-hundred-foot fields, a one-hundred-fifty-foot field and four T-ball fields and also batting cages. This was the concept that was shown to city council in January of twenty twenty for renovation of the fields. It includes renovating those fields, new fencing, backstops, bleachers, batting cages, a beautiful entryway to let people know that they're entering into the new complex with plaza concession stand with restrooms, parking options. The total estimated value of the project out the door is about seven and a half million dollars. And so the recommendation this evening is for council to consider authorization of the city manager to execute the contract with LPA Incorporated in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for design. If approved, the next steps would be to commence design, staff will of course bring back updated conceptual design for council, council review and consideration and input, and we estimate going to construction in twenty-two.
That's just wonderful. All right, uh council members have any comments? All right.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, we're all excited.
Just uh brief brief comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Brief comments. Um we we for this amount of money, I'm kind of shocked at the design cost, but uh I guess that is what it is, we're dealing with Division State Architect and things. Um but for this amount of money, I expect an awful lot of detailed expertise about how to execute this facility, including learning based on what we did in the girls' softball complex and how we don't want to repeat some of the issues that we had there. So I'm looking forward to sort of a smoother rollout and a huge amount of detail about how to properly execute a facility that is sort of cutting-edge and easy to maintain and hopefully, hopefully offers the opportunity for some community participation in the remodel. Because as we've discovered over the years with the Little League, they have a lot of resourceful parents and grandparents and relatives and boosters and past parents, uh just a lot of connections to get stuff done. I think that to the greatest extent, we can take advantage of that and engage them in this project. It not only potentially lowers the cost to us, but it also enhances community engagement, which is something we as a city are always interested in. So those are my comments on the project and I really look forward to seeing it come back and to seeing a great deal of interaction and deep level of detail uh interaction with uh with the Rancho Cordova Little League.
All right. All right, um at this moment, I'd like to ask for a motion, it sounds like Linda already did and I seconded, so can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulpati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Yes. All right, thank you, Albert. Good job. Keep up all hard work. All right, next one is, so the next one is, the resolution establishing campaign contribution limits for elective officials of the city of Rancho Cordova, uh recommendation is adoption. Ask staff for a report. Adam, Art.
Good evening, uh Mayor Gatewood, council, staff and members of the community. Uh this resolution comes to the council uh with a recommendation for consideration and request that you set the amount either at a uh at no limit or an amount that you select and identify this evening. Now, the resolution comes to you because of the council's direction to bring this to the the council at this meeting at your prior uh agenda. Uh as we discussed briefly uh during during that discussion of new laws, one of the new laws that is going into effect at the end of this year is AB five seventy-one that imposes the default campaign contribution limits on cities and counties that are currently applicable to candidates for the state senate and assembly. Um the adjusted amounts of those limits are set for currently set forth in the staff report and they are periodically adjusted and um are currently set at four forty-nine hundred dollars per person for individuals, business entities, committees and PACs and uh nine hundred and nine thousand seven hundred dollars for small contributors as defined by contributor committees rather, as defined by the FPPC. If the council this evening chooses not to impose uh any limit and chooses not to adopt this resolution, those state limits that are applicable will be the applicable limits as of the first of this year. If you choose to adopt the resolution this evening, you can either adopt it as written, uh as drafted, just as a a initial draft with no limit, or we wrote it with the expectation that you might well give us direction this evening to identify a different amount at that you might select uh after your discussion and uh consideration. We note that there are many jurisdictions that are going with the state standard and that there are some that are considering setting uh standards um different from the states. If you choose to set any limit different than the state's default, we do expect, as we described in the fiscal impact uh section, that there will be potential for enforcement actions and we have not crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is with respect to what that would be. The FPPC has previously offered the service to agencies and there's a possibility that that could come with considerable costs and there would be, if you choose to adopt this resolution, uh the probability that the city manager, clerk and I will discuss discuss your options and come back to you with a couple of different options for potential enforcement. Um there, of course, could be complexities with implementing and addressing something that could be um as sensitive as as these sorts of issues for staff. So with that, again, we welcome your discussion about whether or not you want to adopt resolution at all and uh or and if you do not adopt it, you'll just have the state limits or if you want to adopt it with no limits or if you want to select and direct us to adopt it and act it with a different limit. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Adam. Uh city clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
We have one public comment related to this item. It was submitted by Donald Childs. Uh it has been um sent to all of the city council as well as printed for members of the public and is placed in the back of the room. That is all we have received at this time.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask council members, um uh Donald, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I I think I was the one that kind of pushed this at the last one. Um I have every intention of at some point setting some sort of limit, um but we're we're in eighteen years on council or eighteen years as a city, we've never had limits and most cities
I have every intention of, at some point, setting some sort of limit. But we're, in 18 years on council, or 18 years as a city, we've never had limits. And most cities and jurisdictions in this region don't have limits. And frankly, as somebody who probably raises a little more than most of the council members, I can tell you, none of us raise the kind of money that some of the jurisdictions raise. The amount of money in our politics and in the city pales in comparison to other cities around us. I want to make that abundantly clear, that we are not a big spender, that, you know, you don't raise $200,000 or $300,000 like you do in other cities to the west. Let's just put it that way. But with the timing of this, I really want to make sure that we can actually study and see what other cities and jurisdictions around California have done, and what makes sense for, for our races. Because ultimately, and again, to me, no limits only benefit challengers, in my opinion. Campaign contribution limits always favor incumbents because it makes it harder to raise money. What it also does is it tends to invite third-party independent expenditures into races. And if you want to see that kind of an impact, you look no further than the Board of Supervisors, where in off-years you can raise, I believe, $250 a pop, and only 100 people can give you money. And it turns out that the Metro Chamber or a couple of other organizations can walk in and spend $300,000 or $400,000 in a race and, and essentially decide those races with their, with their resources. So I'm just asking that we take the time for now, leave it the way it is, without limits, and study and see what other people and other jurisdictions have started to do across the state, and what makes the most sense for us, and come back with a thoughtful unified plan of how we want to move forward. But the only way we can do that is to act before the end of the year, or we're stuck with the state's rules. Because again, there's a whole bunch of things in here, and again, if you read the staff report and what I've understood too, you know, depending on what we adopt, and if it's not uniform to the, to the FPPC, there's a significant cost to enforcing those rules. And I've been involved with other races that have contribution limits that have to go to the courts, and superior courts and county courts to get things enforced. It, it, this is a, this is a big headache. And so to me, I'm asking my colleagues to act today to give us the time to do this the right way and to do it once the right way.
So Donald, really quick, does that mean that we're going to, we would accept what they gave us? Or are we setting a limit that would allow us to push?
So, so if, if we adopt the resolution the way it's written, there would be no limit, which is what the rule is today, which is what we've all been elected under that rule.
Okay.
And then, and then what I'm asking for is at a future meeting that has been well, probably it'll be two meetings, right? So we'll come back, there'll be a staff presentation comparing and showing us what other communities. And again, this is what we did when we passed our smoking ordinance, or our hen ordinance, or all kinds of other stuff. We looked at what other communities were doing, what made the most sense, what parts from the different ordinances did we want to have adopted into our program, and then adopted it that way, with a workshop maybe, with, with good public input. I know Donald, you know, Childs, you know, sent us a letter, and Don, and Don Childs, I will tell you this. I intend at some point to vote on limits of some sort. But we've never had them in 18 years as a city, and to just go back and say, "The state legislature said this, and now that's what you have." And now we have the same limits that you have if you're running for city council in LA, or if you're running for city council in Galt. That makes no sense to me. And so I'd like to just take enough time to study it.
Okay.
So Garrett.
Linda.
Garrett, I want to agree with Donald.
Okay.
And actually, if you, if you happen to read the major local newspaper, over the last week, they had at least two articles about people who have gotten elected in other cities, Donald said, to the west, and described exactly what he's talking about, by expenditures by a variety of organizations. And, you know, good for them, it works out, and I know we all appreciate support from our own local organizations, but, um, um, this is, from my perspective, this is just another matter of local control. And we need to take control of this ourselves. And as Donald points out, come back at a future date and decide what really works for Rancho Cordova.
I agree.
So, hold on. My understanding is if we, yeah. So if we were to agree to what the state has offered, which is a limit, then we can go change it? Why are we going to agree on a no limit for now and then go back and decide? Why can't we for now go with what the state has offered? Otherwise, we have to pay $10,000 if we don't go with what they've offered. Why can't we go with that and then go decide if we want to change it?
Adam?
We don't have to pay anything in the short term, is my understanding.
It, it does appear that a number of cities are still weighing whether or not to adopt a limit different from the state's limit later on. It does appear that there are a number of cities that are taking the approach that council member Pulapati just articulated.
Is it going to cost us 10 grand if we don't pick a limit?
It will, if you pick any limit other than the state's limit, the FPPC will not give you free enforcement services. And the FPPC, there was a, a local jurisdiction in discussions in Cal cities groups and among colleagues, city attorneys, has, has addressed a variety of apparently potentially valid technical concerns with that enforcement. On, on the flip side, you can also imagine that having the city attorney or the city clerk potentially be the folks who investigate or resolve a conflict over something as important as campaign violations, campaign finance violations by this council could be something that, that many public servants in our position would find to be one of the more difficult jobs to which, that we would be assigned. So we haven't yet sorted out what the alternative to possibly a very expensive FPPC contract could be, but it could be possibly some third-party vendor. Otherwise, of course, you know, we could, we could, we, we do difficult jobs and we could take on this one if we had to. But I think that it could be done for less than the, it appears likely to me that it could be done for less than the FPPC was charging another local jurisdiction.
Interesting.
So that's, that's how, that's why we identify the fiscal impacts.
All right.
And I do think that if you, if you do this pretty quickly, what you, what you don't want to do is be starting to set fundraising limits after people have started to fundraise.
Right. So if you.
So this is something that you should, I think, attend to quite quickly because you could, you could have, you know, you could have issues with a rush to fundraise before you set some limit, or a rush to, to do something. And, and I think that it is something you should, you know, probably plan to address in the first quarter of next year if you, if you are going to plan to change whatever you do tonight.
David?
So if you look at this historically.
Oh, no, go ahead, Linda.
Garrett, if you look at this historically, you know, we're all subject to the rules of the FPPC. Just because, just because we take an action on our own doesn't mean that we get to ignore the FPPC. But in the entire time we've been a city, we've only had one issue ever where somebody refused to pay, uh, somebody actually refused to pay a filing fee. And, um, and, you know, I don't know what happened to it, but it's only happened to us one time.
Yeah. I, I just wanted, Adam, I wanted to ask a clarifying question to what Siri just asked. Because it, to clarify, if we don't have a limit, which we don't now, the FPPC is not responsible for enforcing our, our special rule. The only way that we would end up having to pay extra to the FPPC is if we adopted something other than the state rule that goes into effect in January. So if we say that, that we're staying with the rules that we have, they are still our enforcement body. They always have been, for a whole bunch of other stuff except for contribution, which we wouldn't have any. So it doesn't trigger any cost.
So I, I will just say that logically, what you've just said is correct to me because I have a difficulty imagining what a possible complaint or enforcement action that would be filed if there was no limit set. That said, I, I do read the law technically to say, if you adopt any other limit than the one set forth, we will not help you with enforcement, we will not. So I, I agree with logically what you just said, but I'm not sure that I can imagine every single potential complaint. And again, you know, for the clerk and the manager and I, this is, this whole area of campaign finance law is an area that for, I think, all three of us would emphasize, is one that, that historically cities and, and your, and your city staff here, you know, aren't engaged in. It's a, it's, it's a body of law that, that the electeds generally engage in directly with the, with the other regulatory bodies. So I think I agree with you, but I'm not sure that I can give you a 100% answer because, because.
Well, and Adam, and I, and I appreciate that answer because, because I also think that's something I need, I need to understand better before we just accept the state and saying that the FPPC is going to be our regulator to it. You have the city of Folsom, the city of Sacramento, the West Sacramento, the County Board of Supervisors, Galt. Those are just the ones I can think of right now off the top of my head. All have their own contribution limits and have had them for years in most cases. And so I don't even understand how they enforce their own. I know how West Sac does it because Yolo County Court gets involved when a candidate is violating something over there. And if they spend their own money, then the limits change, and all kinds of other hodgepodge things that are part of their rules. So again, that, that's why when I, when I became aware of this, and I started talking to Adam about this a while ago, was I just want to make sure that we have the time to, to make the right decision for our city and not just accept that the legislature says this is what is now every city's, you know, limits. I, I, I may be just fine with the limits that's there, but I don't, I don't have enough information in front of me to make that.
So Donald, I'll just read what I see here, right?
One sec, Siri. Is David around? Does David want to comment? David? I haven't seen you, so.
I am here, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And I generally, I generally agree with what I hear from my colleagues. Certainly at one level, you know, the idea that the state's going to come metal in our affairs and still another way is problematic. And so sort of the automatic reaction to that is we're in favor of lo, uh, local control, not having the state legislature, you know, mandate details to us on things because they do not understand what's on the ground. And I think Donald made a perfect point on that, on that front. You know, why should someone running for the LA City Council have the same limits and restrictions as someone running for the Galt City Council? Doesn't make much sense. But if we allow the state to regulate things, that is exactly what will happen, time after time after time. So my initial reaction will be, no, I don't want the state meddling in our local affairs. I would rather manage this ourselves. And then the follow-on question would be, what is the most efficient way to do that? I do think, you know, if we had to live with the state, the state limits, it, it's, it would not be problematic for us because those are not, those are, those are very large dollar figures compared to what we typically raise. But in any case, I, yeah, my initial reaction would be no, and let's find the most efficient way to do that locally and do something that makes sense locally.
Okay. Siri, go ahead.
So, yeah, so as I mentioned, right? So according to what I'm reading here, if the city adopts a different specific limitation, including the no limit, the city will incur additional direct staff and attorney fees estimating in the low $10,000. So my question is why to go, or my recommendation is to go with the new state limits and then think about it. We can always change it, like you said, but since we don't know, and these are already high numbers, there's, we're not going to go wrong. We're not, it's not like really low numbers. These are really, really high numbers, and I'm speaking from experience here. You can win with a lot lower than what's, what the options we have. So my recommendation is to go with the new state limits, and then we can always consider on how we want to change it.
Siri, it would cost in the tens of thousands of dollars to do any hearing or workshop in front of the city council. Just from, from staff and staff attorney costs alone, if we want to talk about this again in January, it'll cost $10,000 in staff.
Either way, it's going to, either way, you're going to bring out that topic, right? So why is it going to be $10,000 twice versus $10,000 now and $10,000 again? Or is it the same?
No, if, if we want to talk about this again, it's going to cost $10,000. Like, if, if a developer wants to, wants to, wants to appeal a decision of a project, just, I, I believe the deposit is $10,000, just to bring it in before the city council, in most instances. So the cost to talk about that stuff, that's, that's the staff cost that are included in these. So again, I, I'm fine with leaving our rules the way they are, and we'll change them when we're ready to change them, and, and, and we will make that determination, not the state.
All right, so.
That's my two cents.
Yeah, any, any other opinions right now? So can I ask for a motion to start it off?
I will move the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we're going to go ahead and have a roll call.
Council member.
And, and Mr. Mayor, could I just, could I just clarify, just, just, um, there was not a specific staff recommendation on no limit, but council member Budge, I, I, we did include a resolution that was just a placeholder resolution with no limit. So is your recommendation to adopt the resolution setting no limit?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Stacy.
Council member Budge.
Yes.
Council member Sander.
Aye.
Council member Pulapati.
No.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Yep. All right, so that, last, next one. 14th birthday, approval for, of council member appointments in regional boards, commissions and committees. The council confirms to serve on other agencies, commissions and committees. So guys, at this time, I would like to actually push this to, what did we talk about?
January 4th is our next council meeting.
January 4th, so we can really have a long actual discussion. I think it's time that we actually do strategic thinking when it comes to these committee meetings, and what is going to be the best benefit. So putting a junior councilman on something where they need to argue and somehow get themselves to be the VP in the next two years makes more sense than what we were doing. So I'd like the time to actually sit down, look at the group, maybe get with, you know, and actually put this together and spend some really quality time going over each one. And I just don't have enough documentation and stuff in front of me at this time to actually do it. So I was hoping to push this to January 4th and then really spend some time working this out. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, Garrett, if I could add something there?
Yeah.
I, I agree putting this back, and I agree to a deeper discussion. Last year, if you all will recall, this was one of my hopes for the year, was to come up with priorities for each agency. Unfortunately, those discussions, because we quit having our, our in-person meetings, basically got COVIDed, right? We, it got, the intention we had last year to do this got run over by circumstance. So I hope we can continue that. In short, it's exactly what Mayor Gatewood just said. It's we need a discussion about each agency and what our priorities are for that agency, and how we are best represented at that agency. And as a group, you know, if we come up with those priorities, we've seen, like through Linda and my experience at Regional Transit, and having a focused agenda that the two of us have worked on with staff and Regional Transit staff, we've gotten an enormous number of things done. Between, you know, the, the expertise Linda and I each have, I, I being a past board member and chair, Linda being a current board member, and very focused list. I mean, we had, we had a punch list, Linda, right? I think it had nine things on it at one time, and I'm not sure what it's got now, probably three or so. But that's a very effective way of dealing with an agency. Now, that might be an extreme case, Regional Transit, but I think all of the jobs we do at all of these agencies are important. But if we just go there with no direction or sort of strategic thought about it, we're kind of wasting some of our effort.
Right.
And so I think, I think this assessment could be really productive.
Yeah, and I agree with him, and it also, it also brings in the, the idea of having, you know, some people to actually help us with whatever we're trying to get to. So if that includes bringing in a lobbying group to help us, or, you know, staging someone that understands that group better, you know, it, it's time that we be very strategic. This is our chance to make a real big fit. When COVID ends, in the next, you know, four to six months, and we come out of this, there's going to be a ton of cash getting dumped into the cities, and I want to be positioned for, over the next two to four years to really take advantage. So putting our best council people with the best feet forward in the different locations makes the most sense. Dee, what do you think?
So can I ask?
Oh.
Can I ask the city manager? Can I ask the city manager? And we hope that Siri has.
Um, um, some, can we hope that Siri has, um, a list of what are and, um, a description of what the different, uh, things are?
We have, uh, council member Budge, we have provided a list to council members, is Polypati, and I'll be happy to sit down and go over some of those, uh, specific appointments or or meetings that we have. My question for the council and the mayor is, uh, you mentioned about information for the next council meeting for this discussion. Uh, could you be a little more specific as what information you need for staff to put together for that discussion to be fruitful?
Can you, um?
Can I, can I jump in there?
Go ahead, Dee.
So the first thing I would suggest staff to do is make sure that we have a list that includes ones that are actually in existence. So first off, the Sacramento Human Rights and Fair Housing Commission hasn't existed in, I believe, five years. Um, I think technically I was on that board at one point, and Nancy Bowie was the subcommittee operating member, uh, but it hasn't existed for for sure four years, probably five years. Um, and then what I what might even be helpful for some of these, um, is giving descriptions as far as, I mean, David said, to your point, if we're going to be strategic about it, it's not just about goals, it's also about who can accomplish the goals, right? Or who has that expertise or the relationships depending on, because I don't know who's on all of these.
Well, that if we could get a list of the people that are on the board, like the different members of the different other councils that are on them, that would be really helpful, because, you know.
Well, and Garrett, that's that's going to be really tough if you look at, I mean, if you look at air at the air district, I can just tell you to have served there for eight years, um, I believe there's there's 11 members and, or maybe 13, and like seven of them aren't coming back because of elections or retirements or whatever. So to me, I I I don't I don't know if you if you accomplish this at the next meeting in January, um, but maybe it's make appointments with a commitment of, you know, coming back in two months or something. But to me, if we're ever going to get to the point of, I think, what David talked about a year ago, and probably what I talked about when I was mayor, which is the fact that, you know, I'm on air district because Bob wanted something else when Ken left. And and frankly, Garrett, you're on STA because Bob wanted sanitation after Dan passed away. Like, no rhyme or reason to how we end up on these things, except for whoever's mayor that year just gets to take the person and plop them down where nobody else wants to go, um, which to me is not thoughtful, and I'd like to get to something that is more thoughtful about it. Um, but depending on kind of what are those things that are coming up next, and I I mean, frankly, you know, is is there a big vote in the next two years with one of these? Um, you know.
Oh, that's a good one.
Frankly, Garrett, and you, but Garrett, you kind of you kind of hinted to that, right?
Right.
Um, when, you know, you ended up on STA because literally, you know, there was conversations, somebody else wanted to move over to something else and STA was left over. Had I known that they were about to do a tax measure, I'm not sure I would have put you in that same position. So.
No, I I.
And again, that was my decision, right?
Right. And I think that's the, and I think I agree with you 100%. I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to basically do that. If you can figure, like, I and I don't know how you would do this with your awesome crystal ball, Cyrus, that you have, but if you could forecast where there's potential money or potential big vote, like, you know, STA is coming back in two years, and we know we need to position ourselves better in that group to have someone that's hopefully at the executive branch this time if we want to take advantage of that money. Because even though, uh, you know, I with the help of other people were able to kill it, it's it probably is not going to get killed the second time, and we need to be in a position to get all the money and the benefit. Same thing with RTA, uh, I mean, um, sorry, Linda, what is it? Um, RT. Um, we need to be in the best position possible to make sure that see if we can make a pitch for that new rail station. I mean, that's going to happen shortly, and that would be better to be an executive up there. So who can we put that's going to be our best chance to get that, you know? And then who else can go to, you know, like Saicog to get us the most money possible out of that group? We we just need to look at all the different groups strategically, look at the people that are going to be back and be like, okay, this is our best chance, here's what we need to do, and and this is the resource we need to get it done.
And I and I think there's also a question to be had about which which ones are appropriate to delegate to staff or to, because I know there are other ones where, I mean, it's not even not even the elected officials that go to a lot of those. Um, and so depending on who ha they have that expertise, um, does it make sense to delegate that to Cyrus or to Albert or, you know, depending on depending on what it is? But again, to me, I I want to have a bigger conversation with this, and in eight years, we've never had more than a conversation like this about this topic. And I just think it warrants a a lot bigger discussion. And, you know, to David's point, yeah, we were, you know, the plan was always to do these in retreats, um, you know, over dinner or something like that in in the format that we used to do, and that's not really going to be possible probably for quite a while. So we just, we're going to need to kind of air some probably uncomfortable conversations.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it I would, I would suggest instead of asking staff to come up with what's going on at these organizations, why don't we put together a paragraph about what's coming up at least this year and maybe in the next two years and, um, and what the needs are going to be? We're the ones who are there.
Yeah, thank you, council member.
We shouldn't have.
Right. Thank you, council member. That's what I wanted to say, because in many, uh, many of these cases, you are probably in much better position to identify what real issues they're talking about than staff, because, uh, you have been attending on those meetings, you have been serving on those boards and commissions, and, uh, we can do our best, but I think you probably have greater insight than we do.
Okay. So we need to go back to our.
I I would tend to agree with that. I would tend to agree with that, but I would also say that especially regional sand, uh, well, the hu- human rights and fair housing doesn't exist, uh, but the stuff that Bob was on is probably something that somebody's going to need to do some research. Um, I know that they they voted on a massive project in the last few years, but I don't know what else they're working on.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that on those. And I think what some one of our immediate, most immediate needs, uh, are finding replacement alternatives for those that, um, council member McGarvey served on. And at this point, we're requesting that the alternates to continue the service until a different decision is made. Is that acceptable to the council?
Wait, am I one of them? Hang on.
I I believe you are.
I've not agreed to anything yet.
You're you're going to, um, the sanitation committee, Donald, that's you. That's that's your name.
I've never I've never been, no.
Don't worry about it, you're on there. Don't worry, I scratched you out, you're on there right now. It's it's you. Enjoy yourself.
No, I was gonna say, I I haven't gone to any of those. But yeah, I I mean, it would make the most sense that the the alternates would do it for now, but yeah, that's Garrett, so per, um.
Is it me?
The, yeah, what's?
We, they're listed.
Or at least the list, I'm looking at.
They're listed, so we can we can look it up.
Yes, Mayor Gatewood, it's you.
And regional.
I think you are.
I don't think the alternative should go. I I, oh, man.
I'm I'm.
No, Bob was my my alternate to air and a couple other ones.
Does it say my name?
Yes.
Yeah, it does. I'm looking at, yeah, it's you.
Linda, can you go to that? Oh, that's terrible.
Do what?
All right, so we're good with pushing it to the fifth? So I can get some time? I'll get all those stuff organized.
January 4th, correct?
January 4th, yeah.
Okay.
Give me two weeks. I'll reach out to the heads of my, the ones I sit on, and I'll find out all the answers, and I'll forward them over to you, and maybe Cyrus, you can put it into a nice little form, so we can go through it one at a time and kind of think strategically as a group.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay.
Well, my my two cents is we should take way more time than that, but and i if that means alternate to serve them for a while, or we, you know, Siri, we can find some ones, but but not, you know, Siri, the the danger here, this is what I don't want to have happen to you that I think has happened to me and here, is what I got appointed to my first year is where I got stuck with for eight years, even though I didn't have any expertise or relationships necessarily in the ones I was in. Um, so to me, this warrants a bigger conversation, especially when a new council member arrives, because it it it's just not fair. And based on your interest and your expertise and what do you want to have to do, I mean, ultimately, this appointment, at least for the next four years probably, is is the, that's the things beyond city council you're going to get to work on. And.
So.
I became chair of the air district a few years.
Fourth.
I will.
Okay, so so we'll start the conversation on the fourth, but we might not finish the conversation on the fourth. So we'll start working on it, so we'll just open it up.
I can't. I'm sorry, just personally, we're moving, I can't do anything for the fourth.
Okay, so we're moving that meeting. Cyrus, what's our next meeting?
I would, wait, 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 maybe maybe we can tackle this with Mayor Vice Mayor, but I would say that I would rather target this for a workshop, not a not a not an.
When's our next workshop?
We we're having a very difficult time to secure a workshop date, um, because of all the com- commitments that the council, some council members have. Uh, we do have two budget workshops.
We said, Linda, move it, nobody's supposed to be leaving their house, so why are we busy?
We 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 do have two budget workshops planned for, uh, for the end of January, I think it's 24th and 25th, if I'm not mistaken.
26, 27.
26th and 22nd, 7th. And those are meant to be visioning sessions, so that could be a good topic for those, uh, discussions.
Okay, so let's let's choose one of those.
An hour, an hour or two on this would 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 warrant. In in my opinion, we don't talk enough about public safety or these boards or commissions. And these are, these are, I mean, the I the air district's $25 million budget, and I, you know, we meet once a month, and I've been chair and whatever, fine, but some of these are, I mean, we're talking billions of dollars being spent. And the amount of time that we spend in city council meetings comparatively to how much time is spent at an air district meeting or the two-by-two with the school districts and whatever, like, I mean, these are really important, and I feel like we just kind of slap them together whenever something new comes along. And that just isn't appropriate anymore. And and we didn't have a new council member last year when David said what he said about being strategic about it. And if we're going to be strategic, we should be strategic, not just about what we're trying to do, but who's doing it.
I agree. Cool. All right, so we're going to look for a workshop to find this one, and do I have to do a motion or anything to move it?
Uh, no, we just moved the item to January 26th.
Okay.
For for that budget work session.
That's awesome. All right. Uh, council members, any future?
Cyrus, if you could, uh, put me in touch with the mosquito and vector control board, since I am the alternate, but I never never attended a meeting or had any exchange with them, I'm a little worried about that as a virologist. Um, how, that that could be, uh, what do you what do you call that when you get totally sucked into something? Yeah, that could happen to me.
That's actually a good place, that's actually a good place to have him.
I've kind of, I've tried to avoid that appointment over the years, but, okay, I will I will put up with it for a few months here.
Yeah, you want to you want to learn about valley, valley fever and Zika and everything else?
Yeah, exactly.
I'll be right up your alley, man.
You'll be actually.
I will move that we, I will move that we continue this item to the 26th of January.
Excellent.
John, you ready?
Yeah. All right, so, do you want to vote, or are you good?
Worked.
Okay. All right, so future agenda items. Do we have any? Guys? Donald? Siri?
Siri, didn't you say you had something?
Yes, um, I actually wanted to take, um, a minute to honor the life of the homeless man that passed away this morning. Um, I understand.
That's after this, that's after this.
Okay, I didn't know it was a meeting.
I don't know if anybody else has anything, you probably could do it, but this is if you wanted a future.
Oh.
Do you have any future agenda items?
You want to adjourn at the memory center.
I'll bring it up in the future.
All right, nice. Linda?
No.
Donald? All right. And at this point, we, uh, so adjournment, Siri, go ahead. This is you, hit it.
Yeah, well, as I just said, right, so I just wanted to take a minute or a moment to honor the life of the homeless man that passed away this morning, um, in Rancho Cudahoga. Um, with COVID, we've seen, um, a lot of shelters, uh, that are not available, um, to people that need shelter, and, um, we as a city need to do more in that. I know we're already doing a lot, but there's if there's more that we can do, we need to look into it. But for now, I want to honor the man that passed away this morning.
Also, um, I'm going to take this time to honor all our small business owners that are struggling out there. Guys, we see there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we're here for you guys, and we're going to be doing everything in our power to come alongside you. And at that, I'm going to call the meeting to.
Garrett, Garrett, Garrett.
Yeah.
Garrett, I just wanted to say something too.
Oh.
In the past week or two, we've had, we've had more people pass away than on 9/11 almost every single day. Um, there's a stay-at-home order in effect, we've talked about this many, many times. Stay six feet apart, wash your hands, and wear a mask, and respect your fellow residents, and and like Garrett just said, there is some light at the end of the tunnel, but we still have months and months of having to behave ourselves and protect each other and follow these guidelines to save lives. Because ultimately, movies and books and wars were fought over less than 4,000 people dying in one day, and we've been seeing that multiple days in the past weeks. So please, everybody be careful.
And at that?
Garrett, if I could have one little science, one little science moment?
All right, now you're just playing with me. You don't want me to adjourn the meeting, I get it.
Yeah.
All right, does everyone else want to talk? Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Dave.